Vacation will be given by Reverend Tori Doucette of New Birth Community Baptist Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phone and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Etant of God our Father, Lord, we thank you for all that you have done, all that you still have yet to do. Lord, we pray that you will continue to bless this city, bless this council, God, and all those things that go along with the city. Now, Lord, we pray that this day will be productive and that all our minds will be clear of any selfish thinkings or anything that comes along, but not making the right decision that will cover this community. Now, Lord, I pray that you will govern this council, govern this meeting by your will and your way. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Well, thank everybody for being here, and I certainly thank our bond advisory committee, and I see our chair in the audience today because they did lots of hard work coming together and reviewing everything. And at the end, and I certainly, I only got to make two of the meetings, but at the, I was at the last meeting, and it was to see everybody come together and have a unanimous vote was impressive. So clearly, this entire council, everybody had representatives serving on that committee, so it was well represented from across our community, and to see how well they worked together and heard from each other, and it was very refreshing. So Coach Arthur Lewis, thank you for your leadership in that committee, and I certainly thank all the committee members that participated, which was the majority of them. So, yes, sir. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kenneth Williams, our city manager.
Can we have roll call, please, Mayor?
That would be an idea. Let's have Monday roll call.
Okay, thank you. Mayor West.
Present.
And Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Hillier.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, with that, now we will turn it over to city manager, Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you for being here today. This is an important day for us here, for you, with some decisions to be made. I too would like to thank the bond committee for the work you've done. Coach Lewis, appreciate for leading that, and anyone else here who's participating in that or watching it online. Thank you for your work and for your dedication and making these recommendations. Thank you. Today, we're gonna go have a few goals and things, you can go to the next slide, things we'll try to get through today. One is, you know, can agree on proceeding to proceed with a bond. You have to make that decision, that's the big thing, not just the fact of what goes on it, the fact that you want to go forward with it, so that'll be a big thing. You're discussing finalizing propositions, you know, these propositions have been recommended, but council is the ultimate authority what goes on here. The committee is an advisory board to you as a city council, and you have that authority and your power as a council is to make the fine decision on it. You'll be agreeing on dollar amount, not just the things that will go on here, but also the dollar amounts that you propose to spend. You know, that dollar amount's gonna also determine a tax rate or tax impact and what that means in going forward with that. And on tomorrow, based upon what you do today, we'll come back with a slate of recommendations for considerations for approval by this council for sure. We only have approximately two and a half hours a day, and you have a lot of discussions, so I won't talk long up front. I'm gonna ask Gap Strategies to come up and start up the discussion, but after that, if it pleases the council, I'd like to go proposition by proposition and discuss each proposition as we work through this process. Thank you.
Mayor, council, Jeff Barton with Gap Strategies, and I was part of the team that led your facilitation effort. We have a brief presentation this morning, really just to recap what we talked about two weeks ago when we were here and give you a small amount of additional information.
Thank you.
We do have a number of slides. I'll go through them very quickly, just want to be able to make them part of the record so that you all can show there was additional discussion today. And as this comes up, again, I'm here with my business associate, Cara Buffington, who's a partner in Gap Strategies. I think that's the first couple of slides, but to go ahead and get those out of the way, we had a great team behind us that worked on this as well. As you heard the city manager say, each of you all appointed members to this committee. It was a real pleasure to get to know Chairman Lewis and his colleagues on the committee. Everyone really put in a lot of time. Mayor, you said a majority were there, but you know, we had a super majority present for that meeting where we had a unanimous recommendation to you. So as we move forward, we want to just cover a few things, and I'll start and the slides will come up. This work began in the spring with the appointment of the committee. Thank you, Tina. You can skip on through those first couple, and we'll talk a little bit about the process if you go to the next one. Here's the committee that you all are aware of, great work that they did as we talked about two weeks ago. Next, Tina. And they were asked to really assess the financial wishes of the community, to really listen, engage community sentiment, to prioritize based on that community input and their own experience in the community, what should be on this bond, or at least what might be on this bond, and present a report to you. Next. That started off, as you recall, from about 1.35 billion dollars were the total projects, and through their work, the committee narrowed that down next to the 210 million dollar package that you see today. They worked based on a system that we've developed called community-based consent, where every community, every member of the committee got opportunity to really give their input and then work together, try and come up with consensus to vote where necessary. And as we said, the good news is that they ended up with a unanimous recommendation. You can go on. The final vote, as I said, was unanimous. It took, the committee really went through a number of variations to come up this, with this recommendation to you, and used a lot of different tools, including some spreadsheets that we'll have today to help you fine tune this bond package so that you can look at the, at the different options. And as I was saying, this began back in the spring, for those who may just be tuning into this conversation, and has lasted up through the current day. The committee actually met on July 22nd, its sixth meeting. All of the committee members gave many, many hours during committee meetings, also did homework, also relied on a community survey and a town open house. So this project really was grounded in public input, and that input was open to all citizens of Beaumont. It included almost 3,000 people in an early community survey that set the tone, that gave the members information to work from. That included targeted ads and community-based outreach from members like Coach Lewis, and other members of the committee who reached out, and from your staff who did a great job in helping us get the word out. And what we had in that first community survey was citizens telling us that, you know, they were interested in projects but were price sensitive. As we moved along, that became, that came into better definition. So initially, about 51% of the citizens said they were willing to spend about $10 a month, but as we moved forward, people became more willing as they saw the kinds of projects that were being discovered and the work of the committee, citizens were willing to spend a little bit more. After the committee had done much of its work, we went back to the community, as you recall, with an open house to test those ideas that the committee had been working on. Again, we had a very strong turnout. If you, if you look at typical surveys, 2,600 people involved. It was online and in person. And at the Lakeside Center on July the 12th, and then held open, the open house lasted for more than a week. We shared information about what the committee had been doing, what the tax impact might be, and about how the committee had come to its initial recommendations. Based on that, we, the committee came back and fine tuned their efforts. At the open house, the committee asked a few specific questions about the golf course, about police headquarters, and whether the, the community felt like they were on the right track. And just as a reminder, again, I know we talked about this two meetings ago, but most people in the community thought the golf course could wait and perhaps not be on this bond. A majority were reluctant to include the full police headquarters at the price that was talked about at that time, which was over $100 million. There was a lot of support for some kind of work with the police, but not at that price. And people felt like there should perhaps be a community-wide facility study first to get a sense of the overall needs of the community. And then 54% felt like the BBAC, the Beaumont Bond Advisory Committee, was headed in the right direction, but in fact, as you drilled down a little bit more, the support was deeper and broader than that. That 54% represented folks who also had questions about the golf course, or the police headquarters, or the price of the police headquarters. When you really asked people what they were willing to pay for, then 60% of respondents said they were comfortable spending at least $10 a month on this project, and there was a clear majority, you know, up to $15, but over $15, support began to drop off pretty quickly. So as we got over $15, then support dropped down to less than 35%. So that seems to be the magic number, somewhere in that $10 to $15 range. We also got a number of open-ended comments at the open house. You'll have seen these before, we're glad to answer questions on them if you have them. And then the committee, based on all that, came up with this unanimous set of recommendations first, and perhaps most importantly, that yes, Beaumont should move forward with a bond package in the fall. That was the recommendation. And that there were several distinct areas that merit investment the committee identified for. There was a lot of talk of the committee that, you know, if the council chose, that could be consolidated into three perhaps, or expanded slightly to give voters optimum choice. Then the committee recommended $210 billion of projects as identified as urgent priorities out of that 1.35 billion that they looked at. That brings the tax impact at between $11 and $12 a month. The estimate from your outside financial advisors that that constitutes about $11.24 a month. There's a, and there are a few caveats to that. When we talk about $11.24, we're talking about the monthly cost for the average-priced property, or average-priced home really, in Beaumont, which is estimated to be about $150,000. So if you, if your home is worth more, you would pay more, if it's worth less, you would pay less. And I also want to let you know that the, the financial advisor's done great work in trying to estimate, you know, when phasing would happen and projecting what interest rates were gonna be. So all that's, I'll let him speak to that more, but all of that is, you know, somewhat variable. That's the closest projections that we have at the moment. Very quickly, because I know that you all discussed this and want to get to discussion, but that resulted in infrastructure, drainage, roads, and sidewalks as a recommendation for a proposition at 94.6 million dollars. That was the number one priority for citizens in the community survey, and at the open house as well was infrastructure. And the committee recommended the largest proposition to be on infrastructure, more than any other. Here you see the projects. I know that you have this list, so we won't linger on it. We discussed it last time, but again, sidewalks, roads, and drainage. And then the committee also recommended almost $20 million, or 19.5 million in facilities and public safety. That included, as you can see on the next projects, Tina, animal care, adoption center, fire station, a facilities assessment, some urgent and interim police maintenance and operations improvements until you move forward to police headquarters, and then some security cameras. Also, $47 million, almost, 46.9 million in parks, trails, and recreation. And on the next slide, you can see those, from playground equipment to parks and restrooms, Taro Park upgrades being the largest single project, the Riverfront Park extension, the athletic complex conversion. And then 49.6 million in downtown economic development. As we discussed last time, that's really the regional sports complex, which, you know, was thought of as downtown, it could really be somewhere else, it could be part of, you know, some other proposition, but because of its strong economic development potential and really the basis of it, the committee separated that out. So back to a price check, $210 million, costing about $11.24 for the average homeowner, about 8.8 cents on the tax rate. If you went down to $10, that would generate about 194 million. If you want to add something to this project, keep in mind that the, your outside financial advisor estimates that it costs at this point about, again, we're talking about roughly, but about 61 cents, 60, 62 cents for each $10 million of additional projects. So if you were wanting to look at what it would cost, for example, to get right up to kind of that $15 threshold, then you have something like 60 to 65 million dollars before you begin to get to that threshold. It depends on how close you want to run that, and you know, how much cushion you want to leave for slight variations that may come up. With that, we're here to answer questions. I know that your bond counsel and financial advisor and Mr. Lewis are also here. Please don't hesitate to, to call us back up if you do have questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And appreciate you all's leadership and the bond advisory committee, and I know setting some parameters and gave them some additional tools to be effective at working this out. So, and we're gonna get through, and I'd like for council to share their comments, and I guess begin with, as he, as it was pointed out, as the bond advisory committee, that the bond is something we want to do, and then any individual concerns you may have for those that have reviewed all the, the four different bond proposals broken down. And I'm gonna, does anybody, I think everybody has information to share, so I'm gonna start, and I'll start over with you, Chris, if you're, if you're, you just get back from vacation, so you're.
Mayor, could we, could we start with Prop A if you don't mind?
Sure, yeah.
Go to the next slide. Thank you. And if council wants to do it differently, just let me know. Prop A, let me, this is just what the, the board, the committee recommended. These are the projects that told 34.5, and it's playground equipment, restroom renovations, Taro Park upgrades, and field conversions. Now, I've had the, I've been able to talk with some of you too about some of the things that you're, that you're interested in. So if we go to the next slide, I have some things listed there that might help start the conversation as we go through this discussion. Other consideration, parks and trails, and what I've heard from some of you is possible South End Recreation Center for $10 million. We've been notified that we will probably get a matching $1.9 million grant for that facility. So that's something that you could think about in doing that. Also, the Taro Park upgrades, this 23.9 million dollars, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the botanical gardens and the members of the botanical garden, so that's something that needs discussion, and that's something we would anticipate maybe the council looking at and looking at some things. They could specifically ask for some lighting and some other features out there to look at. Some of you are golfers too, and say maybe some of that could go toward some of the drainage work at the golf course, Humber out there. Not, not the golf course fixing, but drainage work out there for there. And two, you could maybe action here, the amphitheater and vertical lookout in that, in the, in the overall Taro Park feature, we're looking at amphitheater in other places, so that may be something you could maybe decide whether you wanted to or not take out, which would save you $3 million on possibly the vertical lookout structure dollars. So this is just some things that, that I've been asking means, I just kind of bringing that information forward to start the discussion.
The $3 million for drainage, or are you asking that be an addition?
Well, it, it doesn't include that in the three point, I mean, it is included in 23.9.
It is included.
It is.
And, and what about the botanical gardens? Is that included in the 23.9 million as well?
That would need to come out of the 23.9.
And how much is the botanical garden improvements?
We don't have a definite number, but we, we getting input on it, so we, we can get some dollars.
Do we just have a ballpark? Are we talking 2 million, 3 million?
I'm thinking 500,000.
500,000. And does that include, we keep getting emails from various people from the botanical gardens, and we're so happy you're here. They keep talking about street lighting, and they need to improve street lighting around Taro Park. Is that included in the 23.9?
Yes, if you can answer that question.
Staff may want to step up to correct me, but I believe the discussion was that there was, while the Taro Park improvements are outlined in your parks plan, there is a little bit of discretionary money left in there and some soft projects. So I think staff felt like that there was some money to do some of the additions to the botanical gardens within that 23.9, and you might want to specify that. And then if you really want to do larger improvements, you might need some additional money, but staff at least told us that they felt like there was some room to, left over in those. It's a good time to mention also, councilmember, that all of these numbers do have some contingency built into them and some inflation built into them.
Okay. I'm just trying to be sure I understand that on the 23.9 million for Taro Park, it basically includes everything that.
Yes.
We want to do with botanical gardens and the drainage for the golf course.
Yeah, but you, the, the two projects I mentioned might would have to come out to make that number even. That's the amphitheater and the vertical lookout structure.
Yeah.
And another question, I know that the, the botanical gardens is that they want to know what kind of works can be done on, they have a, they have a, also have a garden up by the Cactile Marsh, and a lot of this work is showing the south, but are they doing any work to the north end of the park?
Yes, I cannot forget the question.
I think the garden that you're specifically mentioning was put in last year by the botanical garden.
Yes.
We can work with it and actually enhance what's there as well.
Okay.
So the idea, or the big plan is not to take it out.
Okay.
You know, that's what we're gonna look at. Not saying it may have to come out if we need to do something for drainage inside of the park. So once we get into the nuts and bolts of everything, we may have to, but I'm gonna push, if we don't need to do any drainage work or anything right there in that location, to leave it there as well as enhance it.
Okay, I know that's, it's a concern of theirs. They've, they've invested a lot of money in that.
And we've invested a lot of time and work keeping it up.
Yes, you have.
And this is, and one thing that I'd suggest is, when we're talking about Taro Park, if we just remove the south loop language and just encompass the whole park, it would give us some additional flexibility.
Very confusing.
Okay. And to be clear, Councilmember Crenshaw, the 10 million for the recreation center is not in the 23.9. That would be additional.
It's not, yes. And so in order to come up with this 3 million for the drainage and for the botanical gardens, you're considering the deletion of the amphitheater or the vertical lookout structure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Duryo?
The recreation facility for the south end, that's a deal that's really been needed for that part of Beaumont. There's nothing over there as far as a Sterling Pruitt-like center, what we have in the north end of Beaumont. If we can get something like that for those kids, because there's a lot of, it's needed because there's a lot of criminal activity over there. So we need something like that to get kids off the street, get them inside, kind of like what we're doing in, what they're doing in the north end. And like I said, we got a, a matching like 1.9 million from the state of Texas, and so we would, and I'm talking about over in the Alice Keith, Alice Keith Park area, somewhere around there. I think it would be good for those kids and young adults over there, just to help them, keep them, keep them out of trouble. And not only, I mean, like it'll have, we're talking about basketball courts, weight room, even classrooms and things like that. So I think that's something that's, that's really needed, and I hope we, we need to find a way to, to go ahead on and get that done. And as far as the Henry Humber drainage, I know, that's something that they don't have out there at all, ever. If it rains out there, you can't use that course. If it rains enough, you can't use it for about a week. You know, they have some places, like out in Port Arthur, if it rain in the morning, you could be on it in the afternoon, but this place was built without any drainage whatsoever. And folks have come to me, they like, they really would rather play there than anywhere else, they really liked that course. They just, if it's raining, you can't play there. Also, this amphitheater, what, what, what is that actual, is that like a pavilion, or is it gonna be an actual theater or what?
And I do, just for clarity, I don't believe that was a part of the parks master plan, and so there would have to be more studies to know what that is in terms of design.
Design-wise, but Ford Park has amphitheater.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it'd be like that?
Similar.
Yeah, it's used, but.
Not used.
Decade. It doesn't get used hardly.
Yeah.
Unless we have a hurricane, people could go over there and wait for buses. That's most I've seen it get used. And the, the vertical lookout structure, what is that?
Well, it's a lookout, as it says, vertical lookout structure, with half it planned was to look like an old Derek. You can walk up, look out, see Cactile Marsh, basically one end of the park to the other, as well as bird's eye view.
Right.
So what are, what are the prices on those two?
The lookout structure, 1.5, and I think the amphitheater was 1.5 as well.
Yeah, they told 3 million.
Yeah, the total is 3 million.
Okay, yeah, totally 3 million.
Yeah. Councilman Turner?
Just what I urge citizens to do, and I'm glad this is kind of airing live, is, you know, look up Baltimore, Maryland, and look up some of those areas about what the mayor has actually did in those cities to reduce crime. And Baltimore crime went down over 52%, simply because they provided youth activities for youth throughout the city of Baltimore. And we know what we're dealing with in Beaumont, and to say that recreational activities can't assist in reduction of crime, I, I don't think that's a fair statement, because it's proven that it did it in a community similar to our demographic breakdown. Also, Chicago, the, the crime has rent down. Also, Birmingham, Alabama, the crime has rent down. I challenge people to kind of look up the stats of what they done in those areas in comparison to what we have going on in this area, and we, we have to do more than just always blame crime on police. We have to give these kids an outlet and something to actually do. And for, I remember about three and a half years ago, we start working with Christian Manuel on some type of grant funding to get some projects done in the city of Beaumont, because I knew in order to get things done, you need also funding from the state to kick in. They were in a surplus, and he actually was able to allocate the largest amount of funding for parks and recs. And you can look it up in his most recent budget cycle, he was actually able to allocate it to go specifically to Alice Keith Park. And when we found out this was possible, and the pricing of this is almost, you know, necessary to do, because you gotta look at the median income also in Beaumont, roughly $47,000 median income per household. So how do we suppose some of these kids who are dealing with some of these populous areas to actually get to facilities and get across town when mom and dad may be working three to four jobs, and, you know, they're at home with their brothers and sisters? They just need an outlet to be around more kids and more positive structural environments besides going out and doing things like we seen have happened, break-ins in cars and other things that aren't proper. So to have an opportunity to get this with a matching price, I think is viable. I also would like to raise my hat off to botanical gardens. You guys have been consistent. I've seen your emails, I'm glad staff, without us even having to fight for it, they're already talking about how can we allocate some funding to address you guys' needs as well? Because if we're gonna do something to this magnitude, it's important that we listen to the entire community, not just one park, but everybody. So thank you guys for being consistent. I've seen your emails, I've already asked the city manager for him to actually get ahead of this, I appreciate it. But that was just one of the things with the south part. But that was just one of the things with the South Park area that came up. When we found out that grant was there and we had the opportunity to do this, why not put it on the table to get a feel for how council feels about it?
So, and if I, if I heard correctly, just to put a number with it, uh, ten million represents about a sixty-six cent increase. Sixty-one, sixty-one cent increase. So that would raise it to, uh, ten eighty, or yeah, ten eighty-five? Eleven, yeah, it's eleven twenty-four, excuse me. Yeah.
We, we got them keeping score.
Hey, good. All right. Yes, uh, councilwoman.
In addition to that, I'd like to speak to the fact that if we're going to take the multipurpose complex out of, um, downtown and Sterling Pruitt is going to need some improvements as that is an older facility as well. So I'd like to make sure that we put together something to make sure that Sterling Pruitt gets some updates in the north end. I don't know what that looks like, but we need to make sure that we get that going.
All right. Thank you, councilwoman. Councilman Duriel?
Um, also with the, uh, the twenty-three point nine million for the Terrell Park upgrades, that's going to be a, that's going to be like a a crown jewel of the city of Beaumont. It's going to be very nice, very beautiful. And I would like everyone in the city to have access in it. And, uh, that's why I got with, uh, Mr. Ellis about extending bus routes into the park. So everybody can, can enjoy it. So, and, uh, they did give us some, uh, estimates. It's, and, uh, from the looks of it, it's not, it's not going to be that expensive, that costly to, uh, extend those routes. So folks can go wherever you are in Beaumont, can go out there and enjoy the park. I mean, they got, I don't know what all they're going to include, but I'm pretty sure twenty-three million, it's going to be nice. So we need to open that up and make it available to everybody in the city of Beaumont.
Well, and on that note, which I think is important for everybody to remember, when the first step is a bond, uh, is coming to an agreement on what will be on the bond package. But after it passed, before expenditures occur in that bond, it will come before that council. So, because some of this work will maybe three years before it occurs, you know, two years. So it, it, there.
It's all got to be done before the next election.
And, and councilmember Duriel, uh, that, that bus dollars, that it might be included in the regular budget because of the type of expenditure it is, we can look and see how it fits into the budget.
Ongoing expense, yeah. Councilman Hillier?
Well, I, I, on that same note, to follow up what AJ said to, uh, about, uh, the city and Chris, is it possible to maybe put in the bond, uh, to cover bus expenses for a year or two inside the city so that everyone can ride the bus for free?
I, I don't know that that would be appropriate to do in the bond itself. Uh, I mean, that's something that is, we could look at within the budget and, uh, but I don't, so I don't know that that's a part of this conversation.
Because it, that would alleviate a lot of, a lot of hardship with a lot of the, uh, like you said, the average income is forty-seven thousand. I mean, that, you think about what people that go to work and use the bus every day, what kind of savings that would be for them and for the kids, especially with the youth programs. I mean, the, what, what zip did to provide that to the, the people of the city is just amazing. And, and I think that we could, we take that and we enhance it and we say, hey, let's offer this to everybody for an extended, extended period of time so that, that you, you take some of the burden off of transportation for a lot of these people. So, I mean, it's just an idea that, uh, is worth, worth talking about.
We are, we are already doing, uh, free for veterans to ride the bus right now. And I think, didn't we just have a presentation where they're doing reduced rates for school kids on the city buses during the summer?
For the summer. And, and I think you, and you were at last meeting, councilmember, typically for bond projects, it, it, it's for expenditures that last over twenty years. We could look at doing something again, inside the budget with that, you know, we, we already, what do we spend transfer per year for, for the transit system, six or seven, what did you, Chris?
Yeah, the overall cost is about six million a year. But we do get, uh, we get funding from the FTA and Tech Dot to cover some. But to that point, um, I don't think it would be, operating would not be eligible as a bond expense, but as the manager mentioned, uh, we could look at it in terms of the annual regular budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman. Uh, any other comments? Councilman Crenshaw?
Well, yes, uh, so this matching one point nine million dollar grant, could that, does the, uh, multipurpose center qualify for that?
This is location, the one point nine million was.
Allocated for Alice Keith.
So that, so you're, you're talking about a recreation center wouldn't be at Terrell Park, it would be at Alice Keith?
It would be Alice, it's allocated for Alice Keith Park.
This one point nine that is mentioned in this, that was specifically done this legislative session that was targeted for there. I think there was also some money for Port Arthur.
So this is not Terrell Park?
This is not Terrell Park. That's right, different recreation center.
Yeah, that's for Alice Keith Park.
Yes. Okay. Uh, all right. Well, then assuming, uh, we're going to change the language to, uh, remove the word south. Then I think that that would be helpful. Uh, I also would feel comfortable slightly increasing this amount from twenty-three point nine to just an even twenty-five million. Um, and having that include the additional funding for the botanical gardens and the three million for the drainage. Uh, and then I do think it's a good idea to take out the amphitheater and the vertical, uh, structure lookout in order to fund those, because I hear a lot more from people regarding the botanical gardens and the, the drainage issue needing to be fixed than I ever do people telling me they want an amphitheater or a vertical structure to look at birds from. I mean, you know, you can just look in the trees if you want to see a bird. Um, and then, um, I, I think that ten million for a recreational center is, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm all for supporting our youth. Uh, I, I, I am concerned that if we're, uh, potentially about to approve fifty million for a multipurpose center that's going to be, uh, possibly off of College Street, that, uh, another ten million at Alice Keith Park, uh, seems like quite a bit. And I wonder if maybe it wouldn't make sense to have this an additional item just to vote. Uh, and not have it all part of Prop A and breaking out that item separately. That would be a separate vote. That way if voters really do want it, then they can approve it. And if they don't want it, it doesn't run the risk of, uh, hurting the chances of the twenty-five million for, um, Terrell Park and the other projects getting approved. So.
Thank you for your input on that, yes. Councilman Williams, did you have something on this? You got Mike?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Councilman Crenshaw. I, I just, my concern would be, um, I mean, I, I agree with what Councilman Turner said of giving kids things to do and, and, and keeping them busy and, uh, and, and I've read about Baltimore and, and seen what they've done up there. Um, for me, it's, I, I, I worry that, have the same worry. If we're spending fifty million dollars on a, on a, another facility, would there be some sort of fatigue, uh, on that type of project? That, that would be my main concern and, and, and would be open to, um, possibly reconfiguring the way it sits on the ballot or, or what it's grouped with.
Thank you, councilman.
One thing I have to say about what they're saying, uh, the, uh, complex on College Street, uh, it's just a long way from South Park.
Sure.
Where the kids are, where this is, where we have crime, where, and it's been needed for a long time. So I don't want to do, if, I would like to get that done and I wouldn't want to, I don't want to do anything that jeopardize that. And I, I understand about the, uh, the, um, athletic complex as well. You know, that's a, uh, economic development deal. So I understand that too, but, uh, I think, uh, I think we, we're smart enough to get both of them done.
And I think we're smart enough to get the north end in here too.
All right.
Uh, if, could we ask, uh, is there something in the strategic plan about upgrades at Sterling Pruitt? Do we have a, like a dollar figure? I mean, we, we need something to operate off of. Is there anything in there about improvements in the strategic plan?
Is Kenny here with?
Is that part of the CIP?
No, sir.
I don't think it's a part of the CIP.
No, and I think what happened was War Three was going to get the multipurpose complex. So that's kind of near the north end, wouldn't have been a big deal. Now that that's not going to be in the north end, what I've been learning is that the Sterling Pruitt, it needs improvements, right? So I was going to work in my mind to sell downtown as the location. So it's not too far from the north end, but now we're talking about down College. So if what we're going to be left with is the Sterling Pruitt, then I'm going to need that facility to be state of the art, like the South End facility and the College Street facility. Which I guess that's part of this bond process. I, I need some too, uh, um, at Sterling Pruitt.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilman Turner?
Mr. Williams, I, I have a question. I've kind of seen it in other cities where, let's just say the, the multipurpose facility had a budget of fifty-one, fifty-two million dollars and it came out that we were able to get it done for forty-four million dollars. Could it be any kind of way that the additional contingency can be allocated to be rededicated to other recreational projects within the city of Beaumont? Is that possible?
Change in the language?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and we have our bond counseling advisor here too, but yes, uh, uh, I've been involved with propositions where they're word in such a way that if dollars are, are left over or whatever, you can, they can be used for similar projects.
Yeah, because what, what, I don't want to get caught up into, because I know as we go through this, it's going to be other things that are going to be proposed that wasn't in the original bond amount. And if we start right now, going about it with this mindset, it's going to continue through every individual itemized project. So if we're going to try to work through this, if we pick apart or pick at certain projects, I know from my experience of seeing other councils do this, you'll start seeing other council members push back at other proposed projects that council members are kind of interested in. So I'm, what I'm saying is can we kind of work through this? Cause we're at the beginning and figure out a way to, I don't want to say make it work, but at least be able to move past this topic. Cause I'm more than confident it's going to be other projects that were not recommended that's going to be proposed. And I don't want to get it too contentious this early to get to the point to when those come up, you'll automatically see council members against that as well.
Well said, Councilman Turner. And I, I think we need to, you know, remember too, that as we've begun this process, we could look at future bonds as well. I think, uh, you know, for forty-three years, this council didn't do any bonds. And, uh, there is some excitement now associated with this bond project and the amount of work. And, uh, and some are going to require some additional studies to know exactly what's going to be best for that. Because we haven't necessarily invested the amount of money that we'd need to when we're spending tens of millions of dollars on that project. But what it does is, uh, from my understanding, gives us the input that this is the direction the, uh, voter in public wants to go. And, uh, so it's given us some guidance to, uh, to have some change, some positive change, quality of life issues that will last decades. Because as we've seen, there hadn't been anything of this scope, uh, done in our city. So there, there's always going to be a desire for more and I think we need to keep that in mind. But in terms of making sure that we're listening to our bond advisory committee too, that did the work in this process and, uh, and I think one huge benefit of having this is future councils and, uh, bond advisory committees are going to understand this process more. And by creating some, uh, additional, uh, committees or commissions that I'm looking at in terms of for the city involving traffic and mobility and other things, this can help us know what we're going to want to put on these future bonds. Because when we start rushing to spend tens of millions of dollars, we don't want to, and all our current projects are things that have been something that the city's been looking at for, uh, for the most part, quite some time. So.
Can we, can we go back to the previous slide that has all the? I wish we had this in front of us so far as printed, but, um, does the playground equipment include, uh, the rubber things for the accessible chairs?
Kristina, could you get us some copies for council? Thank you. Yeah, here's.
In the, in the nine proposed playgrounds, it does not. But when we go out to put in the new playground equipment in Terrell Park, if that passes, it will. Uh, at the last meeting, I think you brought up the cost. So I did, uh, reach out to a couple of our vendors and the cost for Rogers Park alone is two hundred and fifty thousand. Central Park is five hundred thousand.
Okay. Uh, I would propose then adding seven hundred and fifty thousand to playground, uh, equipment for this bond that includes making Rogers and what's the other one? Central Park?
Yeah, Imagination Station.
Accessible with the rubber mats. Is it, is it a walkway? Padding?
Yes, pathway. And then once it gets up to the.
Pathway.
Yeah, it spreads out.
Okay. So then that would bring playground equipment up to two million. Um, restroom. Do I have anything on restroom renovations? I haven't seen that. And field conversions, that's at the, uh, athletic, yeah.
Athletic complex.
So Mr. Williams is thirty-four point four million. Uh, that would only go up if the playground equipment goes up and then we increase to thirty, twenty-three point nine million to twenty-five million on Terrell Park?
Okay. So the seven fifty for the playground equipment, that's in addition to the twenty-five?
In addition to the one point two?
Yes. Okay.
I'm proposing that.
Okay. So you want to round out the playground equipment to two?
I think we just bring it up to two million.
Okay. And then the, uh, Terrell Park up to twenty-five.
Councilman Williams and Councilman Turner?
So would the removal of the amphitheater, that three million? And, and then the addition of the, the rec center would, excuse me, would that, would that result in a seven million increase? Or was that three million deletion already accounted for?
I'm sorry, I was making some notes.
No, you're good. So it said the, the amphitheater and the lookout was three million. So if we killed that, that would come off of that twenty-three that was already included in that?
Uh, it was included in that, but we were compensating it with the, with the drainage for, for Homburg.
Okay.
And botanical gardens.
And botanical garden.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Duriel?
So I know Ms., our director, Mr. Regge, just sat down, but if you don't mind, I just had a question in reference to.
Yeah, you might want to stand up for this argument.
Can you go back to the slide where we had, where we had roughly one point two million dollars allocated for playground equipment? And again, I just want council members to understand, how much was the playground equipment at Central Park, the Imagination Station? Almost five hundred thousand, right?
I was going to say just under five hundred thousand.
So it, just think about it. How many parks did you have allocated? To my understanding, was it eight or nine within this one point two million?
Nine.
Nine. So I want us to be realistic about the type of structures we're going to get with one point two million dollars divided by nine parks. When one park was the quality structure, it cost over five hundred thousand. And let's not sugarcoat it. Rogers Park, probably in the west end is our most used park. That's two hundred and fifty. That's not half of what it's going to look like was already there. Alice Keith. I mean, not Alice Keith, but the Imagination Station, which is Central Park. And then also probably in the north end, probably the most used park might be Magnolia Park. So just keep in mind when we're breaking down how much money this is per park, one point two million spread across nine, you're not going to get that quality. Look, I don't want us to be upset when we see what we're getting. So I just want us to kind of.
Think we need to increase that maybe to?
Yeah, kind of, kind of what you were talking about. Cause you want to get to the point where at least at our three major parks between the community, at least those three major parks look at the, at the likelihood, they should be like destination parks. So I, I'm just a little concerned that if it costs a half a million for that one part, Rogers, you don't want to give it, you don't want to give it two hundred and fifty thousand and not get half of the product when it's probably the most utilized part. You kind of want at least a park in each community to have that quality. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Ken, do you have an itemized list of what that equipment does? For that one point two million?
Yeah, the park names?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you give us that?
I mean, the playground equipment?
Good fifteen years is about your timeframe.
Um, if I could.
Councilwoman?
Um, I'd like to talk maybe about the field conversions. If that's not like a whole major big deal, maybe some of that money can be allocated to, I mean, do we have a study on what we're doing? If, if, if this field conversion is absolutely necessary, I mean, is there any dialogue on that? What, what are we doing?
I think Jimmy can probably speak a little more on the.
What are we doing there?
Field conversion. You, do you have some information?
Would you like to, to give you the names of those parks first?
Yeah.
So we have Hal Booty, Cottonwood, Fletcher Mini Park, Pearlstein, Guzman, Callias Ferry, Magnolia, Roberts, and Rogers.
Ooh, that was fast, boss. Can you do it one more time? Slow it down a little bit for the people who write.
So we got Hal Booty.
Where is that?
Behind Target.
North End.
Cottonwood.
North End.
Fletcher Mini Park.
Mid, midtown, uh, avenues.
Pearlstein.
Amelia.
Guzman.
Where's Guzman?
Is that in the North End?
It's the North End as well. Callias Ferry.
North End.
Magnolia.
North End.
That's it?
Roberts.
It's South.
And Rogers.
And Rogers. Okay, well, I'll take it.
Getting one of War Four.
Councilman Williams?
Have we done any type of traffic study on any of these parks? I mean, do we know the level of, uh, you know, attendance that each of them are seeing or?
Whereas we all know Rogers Park is one of our busiest.
Sure.
Uh, the rest of our parks that we have listed here, besides Callias Ferry, is really your neighborhood parks. They are utilized, playground equipment especially in Hal Booty. It's in bad shape.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, all of these parks, uh.
Could you give us the age on that, cause that may give us some perspective, how old that stuff is?
Eighteen years.
Okay.
Hal Booty. So yeah. It's in our Parks Master Plan, said that these need to be replaced immediately.
And for those that, uh, when they get in that kinda shape, they're, the parks aren't gonna be utilized very much because of the, of the equipment.
All the Band-Aids we put on them.
Be inclusive to all our kids, even our, our special needs?
All new parks we put in are inclusive.
Okay.
But what we use is the, uh, flooring that's out at Central Park now. It is ADA compliant. You know, it takes time for that, uh, wood fiber mulch to compact. Cause it's engineered wood fiber, and it's easier, once it's there, over a year and starts to settle, it is easier to roll on if need be. Most cities, like I discussed at the last meeting, you don't always have that rubber flooring at every park because of cost. Rogers Park, right now, we debating putting two-hundred-and-fifty thousand into the playground. Rubber flooring is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that's the reason why. Usually have targeted parks that have the rubber flooring because of cost.
Yeah, I just, the, the wood is, is not real good for, for wheelchairs.
It's not.
For moving, and kids fall and knock it up. I know that Port Nature's opened their park, and they had the wood. And a lot of the parents of the special needs kids cried out, and, uh, they went in, closed it, and put the rubber matting down.
Just have to have the funds.
So I, I just wanna make sure that we're inclusive to all kids, not, not just, you know, that we, we make sure that these families that have these incredibly, uh, amazing children that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you, when you look at Rogers and you look at Magnolia, cause, well, I would have to ask Councilwoman Sherwood, what, what park you feel like is the most impactful in the North End? I think every council member knows Rogers in the West End is the most, you know, frequented. So if you look at those North End parks, Councilwoman Sherwood, what, what do you feel? What park is the most utilized?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think that if I had to choose a park, I'd probably go with like a Magnolia just because of where it's located and what it's attached to, which is Sterling Pruitt. But then you gotta think, there's not really any park equipment at Magnolia, right?
Mm-hmm.
At all.
So my follow-up question is, okay, we know two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is allocated for Rogers. How much is allocated for Magnolia?
Hundred-and-fifty.
Hundred-and-fifty? So, well, instead of pushing it up to a million, I think, I mean, that three million, I think if you make Rogers Park and Magnolia equal to what happened at Central Park, I think that would kinda give us those three parks and a park in each side of town that's actually elite and have those kids, the, somewhere from the go-to, and it'll probably come out a lot less. I just, I just know what that equipment's gonna look like, and I don't want council to be surprised when they see it.
Well, I'm glad you, look, you're the senior, we listening. I'm listening, cause I don't wanna wreck.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't wanna have to go back and replace it in five years.
Well, certainly all of this is improvements, and the more money we spend on it, the more bang we get for the buck. But the higher the property tax rate increases.
I know, I know this is stretching, I'd be cool with some of them neighborhood parks if we had to make them come out.
We got a little wiggle room.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I just know the frequent parks, like you said, Mike, it's important that we.
In the, uh, for our bond council, the, the language, I, I know we're getting in the weeds a little bit today. And I, my, my feeling is, we're probably a little bit more in the weeds than we need to be because, uh, a lot of this, w- once it gets passed, it can be flushed out as long as we're spending those monies in that, in those priority areas.
I agree.
We've only got an hour left, we gotta go.
Yeah, and when we start talking about which parks, it's important, but I think that doesn't need to be for today. Once the bond passes, we're gonna be able, we'll have that money to spend.
But can we at least get the figure so we know what to put for the park improvements? And then later, we can figure out how to divide it up?
Right, I mean, I, I think, uh, amounts have been suggested. I don't think they're gonna necessarily have amounts right now. I mean, you can give us projections, huh?
Could we have it for tomorrow though? So we know the amount for playground equipment? To, to make all three parks similar?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great.
For the, yeah, for, for the proposal that's presented, that'd be good. If we can get that to. And you might, and you might address the bond for a minute. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Derek Mitchell, I'm your bond counsel with Holland and Knight. And so to your point, Mayor, the, uh, the language i- is better to have the language, um, as general as possible in connection with parks. Because to your point, in, in case you don't get to one, or you have extra money, you can use it for other things. So that's exactly what you wanna do. If you can, if you can be less specific, that's good.
All right.
Thank you.
So just keeping that in mind, council, that, the language. All right, I know we do have, uh, we spent an hour, we probably need to move on, or we're not gonna get to.
Councilwoman Sherwood was wanting some information on the, uh, the field, the softball fields, and, uh, Jimmy had came up to speak, we didn't get a chance to speak, Mr. Neal.
Yes, come on up, Jim.
So as you guys have heard us present multiple times, the, there's really, the, the fields at Ford Park, they pretty much stop at twelve years old. So what we're proposing is increasing the size at Complex Four to be able to host baseball thirteen and up. Turf those.
That's what I was wondering.
Heard about that during the bond workshop.
Yes, we talked about it there, we've thought about it here numerous times. Councilman Duryo, you've kinda pushed for this quite a bit, so.
Okay, I just was wondering, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Can I, one more question? Real quick.
Yeah, real quick.
What, what, what went behind, why was that, um, the athletic complex originally, it was told that it was gonna be like behind the, uh, Lakeside Center and that big field right there?
Great lawn?
Yeah, the great lawn. Why, uh, why was it decided not to be there?
I don't, my understanding is to give it more flexibility on where we'll place it. In the bond, we don't have to designate a specific location. And, uh, and it was suggested that we might look at, at putting it at the athletic complex. I think we could have a, a study that would, you know, reflect usage that could help us in that direction.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, we've gotten some other feasibility studies, and I think that would be, uh, you know, a part of this process.
All right, thanks.
And again, is one, one reason we might wanna keep these as general as we can in these specific areas. So, because obviously, we're gonna wanna save money where we can on these facilities. And if it leaves us with money that we, uh, need to spend in another area on the same item, well, it'll give us that flexibility. It looked like Mr. Barton might have something to add.
Mayor, just a question, uh, we're trying to keep a running total for you as we go. And I know that none of these are final, and y'all may shift. But I just wasn't clear, there was some talk about raising the playground equipment to, uh, an even three million dollars? And then there was some more discussion about maybe shifting off of that. I wondered where the, where you ended on that?
I think we're around three million, but we're waiting on Ken to get back with us on, uh, what it would cost to make all three of the main parks look similar.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Prop B. Next slide. Thank you. This is what was proposed by the, uh, committee. Uh, Animal Care Services Building Facility, seven point nine million. Fire Station Number Four, six point six, uh, million. Facilities Assessment, five hundred and fifty K. Police Operations, three point four million, and Downtown Cameras, one million. And the next slide. And based upon a lot of the feedback I've gotten, this is some things that council might wanna talk about, might wanna, uh, consider. One is place the sports facility in the Prop B. Facilities Group at forty-nine, six seventy, if she'll choose, you can just discuss that. New construction for a police station, fifty-five thou- million, I'm sorry, fifty-five million. I wish it was fifty-five thousand, fifty-five million. We done some extensive research and feel really good about that number. Council so chooses to do so. Police security system, instead of downtown cameras, we, we wanna focus more on security and have that, those dollars in the, in charge of the police department, uh, for there. And then just have a general ten million dollars for facilities improvements. And this includes the three point four million for existing police station maintenance, and the five fifty for the police, uh, station assessment. That goes away and goes into that ten million dollars. But also that facilities assessment was always for the, all city buildings, and it continued to be so, do so, and for the old police station. And it includes some dollars, uh, improvements to City Hall. There was some discussion about City Hall needed some work, and, uh, so we built in some dollars into there. So I have some, uh, slides behind this, but this is, uh, right where we are to start the conversation.
So that, but that's gonna increase the, uh, facilities and public safety, which is, uh, Prop B, that fifty-five million's new money, correct?
Yes, new money. Yeah.
What does that bring this new total to for Prop B?
Be about seventy-five million, wouldn't it?
It's keeping total.
Well, it'd be a lot more than that if you include the, um, multipurpose.
And the multipurpose, and it goes into it too, so.
Right, but that's, that is something apart, that's been a part of the ten, two, two-hundred-and-ten million. I'm talking about new money overall to the.
Probably get you close to a hundred million, if somebody out there is doing the math, for the entire package, if it's there.
Yes, Councilman Williams?
For the fifty-five on the new police station, I thought I'd seen somewhere previously that it was around a hundred.
Yes, and I just think that's not a very good number at all. I don't think the seventy-five million's a good number. And I, I've got some more slides here to talk about it, if you would.
Yeah, let's move through.
Yeah, let, let's go to the next slide. Uh, the police, police station, you know, why are we even talking about a police station? One, the current facility, which we've been reported fifty thousand, fifty-six thousand square feet is just, uh, too, too small. So above all things, we need to do, no matter what you do, you need a facility analysis to determine what you actually need in a police facility. In talking with the police, uh, staff, the senior staff, uh, they're thinking something ninety to a hundred thousand square feet, uh, building. Again, need a facility assessment. We can, uh, say that all day long, but basically, until they do that, you don't know what you need. We're looking at pop, uh, around five hundred dollars per square foot for a building such as this. And that's kinda the going rate in the Houston Dallas, Austin area. And estimates for Beaumont, and talking some, to some local architects, it'd be as, as low as three to four hundred dollars a square foot for construction. But estimates based upon, you know, five hundred square foot for a ninety to a hundred thousand square foot building is forty-five million to fifty million dollars. And, uh, you know, we would be looking at a design bill process with construction manager risk, where you sit down with the architect and contract in the city and come up with the building costs, uh, for sure. Which is a very, very, uh, good way to come, come in with the project that is, is within budget. And some considerations with a new police station here, we wouldn't have expenses for a new, uh, dispatch center. Dispatch center's already there. DOC's already built, real-time crime center's already built. And speaking with chief and staff, they don't want that as a part of a new facility. So look, that's a few dollars. Next slide. And looking at new police station versus old, we've looked at some old buildings and old construction. And looking at the costs, the cost of square foot is very similar to building a new facility. It's almost exactly the same for the new facility. It's approximately five hundred dollars per square foot. And if we got a s- same-sized building, we'd be paying for an older building to be re- remodeled for the same price, we could get a brand-new building, basically. And then there's the space usable, is it usable for the police department, you know, police operations? And this definitely be less functional than our environmental concerns you always have to worry about. Then there's what's the quality of what you're getting, efficiency of an old building, and the security compromise, you know? And looking at the International Association of Police Chiefs study, they specifically addressed trying to, um, retrofit retail stores or buildings to make them police stations and, and the issues with that, and, and the issues that don't always work out well. New construction, uh, space analysis, you know, it's easy to come up with that estimate. You know, you figure out what you want, and basically put, apply that square foot price to it, and you come up with a pretty good number for it, for sure. You get what you want. You build something that's to the philosophy for your department, you know, whatever your department, what their goals are, you can build it exactly to what you're trying to fit, what you're trying to make your department become. Yeah, modern amenities, modern technology, uh, it's more efficient, much more efficient with the new building. And then it's designed to meet safety codes. You know, we don't have to go about retrofit and all of that. And then employees are motivated when they work in real nice workspaces, they really appreciate it. You optimize space, you have better workflows, the communication's better, it, it all just works better. And then it's more energy efficient, and you actually end up saving money in the long term with cost and operations, what you're doing. Then it's just to improve community perception. You know, the city's, uh, history with purchasing old buildings is not great. So, you know, it's much better for us to try to build a new building for the same price. And there's a, and the one we're looking at, there's a reason the feds moved out of it. And moved into one of Flanagan's buildings, and that tell you a lot, right there, that they compromised.
I don't think that was a local decision, though. I think that that was GSA and their whole system.
Okay.
My, my understanding is talking to particularly the attorneys in the US Attorney's Office, they would give anything to be back in their old building.
Okay, all right, let's move on, thanks. Next slide. Cost comparison, this came from the International Association of Chiefs of Police, directly from their report on, on police stations that were built, brand-new stations that were built. Grand Prairie built a hundred and nine thousand, two and nineteen square foot building. It cost per square foot of three ninety-seven, although it being twenty-ten, forty-three million, four and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, City of Cowan in twenty-twenty-three, built a seventy-seven thousand square foot building, four and eighty dollars square foot for thirty-seven million dollars. College Station built a seventy-five thousand square foot police station, three hundred and thirty-three dollars square foot in twenty-twenty, for a cost of twenty-five million dollars. in twenty-twenty for a cost of twenty-five million dollars. And anticipated in Buta, we built the municipal facility that included a police station at seventy-five thousand square feet and three hundred and sixty dollars for twenty-seven million dollars. And it came in under budget. It was less than twenty-seven million dollars. And Carthage, right as we speak, twenty-twenty-five, although it's a small station, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet, that's four and fifty-eight dollars square feet for three million and five. And Orlando, Florida, built a hundred thousand square foot facility for twenty-six million, seven thirty-two, seven fifty-five. Next slide. Current, looking at what's being built in our community right now. These are projects that are being have gotten permits from our permit department to be built as we speak. The Exor Hotel got their permit, the bill of sixty-six thousand five hundred square foot hotel. Price per square foot, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, which is a total price of eight million and five. The VA Clinic, I think some of you went to the groundbreaking, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twelve square foot building, four and sixty-five dollars, thirty-eight, eight cents square foot for thirty-one million dollars. Baptist Cancer Center, forty-six thousand, four and sixty-six square foot building for twenty-four million dollars. And medical uses are typically higher than other uses when builders, when you build them. And Beaumont, Bonnet John is thirty-five thousand, two eighty, for a total cost of eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. And to be, this would be done through a construction manager risk type construction. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. It can only be done through vertical construction, which means a building. You can't use construction management at risk to build water lines and sewer lines or highway ways. But it's where you hire your contractor upfront and you get your architect in the city and you sit down and basically design the building as a construction team and do it. It's a design bill project. It's not bid. So you don't go through a bidding process, which actually drives up the cost and it saves you money. You work with those three people. And when you get through with that, the contractor will give you a guaranteed maximum price. And they can exceed that guaranteed maximum price for that project. They can exceed it. So once you get that signed in, it's theirs. That's the price you're going to build the building for, and that's it. And the contractor has all subs and any unspent funds in that is retained by the owner. When we finished the municipal facility in Buta, we got a two million dollar rebate. It came in under budget and under time. It's a great way to do a construction project and saves money. So it's definitely, I don't know where those estimates came from, from either group, but you definitely can build a brand new police facility for fifty-five million dollars and less. And that's five million. I anticipate that's five million more than you would need in doing that. Next slide. Is there another slide? No, go back. So while you want to look at things and what you want to do, you can invest in an old building. We invested in an old building first in Buta. It lasted eight years and then we built a new facility. But you got something that will take you into the next thirty, fifty years if you get a new facility with this and with these dollars. These dollars anticipated also include site and that also includes soft cost. So you'll be able to get FFNE friendship and get a site for these dollars based upon these estimates. And these are estimates from your community and from police stations across the country.
Well, and it's also important to remember that our current police station is over fifty years old. So the when we talk about thirty to fifty years, we can certainly get fifty years. And if it's so it's not a, it's a reasonable number for sure. Councilman Williams.
What happens if you do come in? Do you just not issue that debt? Like if you pass fifty million and it cost you?
Yeah, well, what we did, we did two things. One, we took the money, part of it and paid down the debt. We just paid it to make the debtless of that, you know. We added some other things we wanted into the project and did that too. So you can do that. You can pay down the debt or spin it toward somewhere in the project.
Yes, Councilman Hilliard.
And you know, it would, you said it, but to put our entire police department in one building, I believe we're in several different buildings now that we're having to maintain. And, you know, I've had a lot of used cars that I keep throwing money at, hoping that one day I won't have to. But I think that with the police station, if we we don't build them a new building, we are going to be spending millions of dollars. And in the end, we it would have been more cost effective to build a new one.
Okay, yes.
Also, too, I'm glad to look at these numbers and know that it can be done for inside of that amount because the hundred million dollar price tag was a very big deal. And to look at being able to possibly get a new facility for police at this, you know, at for this price is it's it's. I love it. I'm here for it.
Councilman Turner.
Dollar amount to the bond price with the with the new police facility. Me personally, I'm not opposed at all to taking care of our police department. I feel like often, you know, a lot of departments come up here and ask for things and get them. And I'm kind of appreciative of how they do work and go about their business. So I'm not opposed at all, but I'm interested in seeing, we were originally talking about eleven dollars and some change. What are we looking at now?
Well, I guess the goal is to stay under that fifteen. And once if you stay under that fifteen, you'll be in a good position with. I think that's the goal, staying under the fifteen. So we got to bump up against it. And once we get close, they're going to let us know as we have go through this discussion, but they're going to be at this end. Might have to take a little haircut somewhere along the line, but I don't anticipate much as the way we're going right now.
And as a reminder, we always want to keep the surveys that were done through the public open house because some of it we're acting like we're going to get and this is going to require a vote. And our Bond Advisory Committee also had to reflect on all of this in their six meetings, which all of them lasted two hours or more, sometimes three or four. So the amount of time that we're putting through it, I think the general wording is important. And I'm going to have Chairman Arthur Lewis, who chaired the committee, have a moment here.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, that's exciting because the only numbers that we heard, only numbers we were hearing was one hundred plus million dollars. And we couldn't make that fit. I'm excited about this to get what Beaumont needs for fifty to fifty-five million. That's exciting for the people of Beaumont. They 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 can chew on that a little bit better. They they were, you know, they were turned off with that number. I understand why. Because we're trying to keep it at that mark.
Right.
We're very hard, ten to fifteen, fifteen was the big stretch. So that's exciting to see that that information that you've gotten to consider. That's a great deal.
Thank you.
And for AJ, I did do a little math. They said sixty-two cents per ten million. So it winds up being a little over three dollars added. And if we're at eleven twenty-four, it kind of puts us right close to, right under fifteen dollars, just because I know you like the math.
Yeah. All right. We want to in terms of getting some numbers, let's move forward to Prop C so we can make sure we get through all the propositions today, at least at a high level.
Okay, this is what was proposed by the committee. City sidewalks, five point two million. Dallin Road, one, thirty-eight point two. Dallin Road, one, it's thirty-eight point two. Dallin Road, two, fourteen point three. Point Parkway, point nine. And drainage upgrades, twenty-six point two. And I have some comments on the next slide.
Okay.
I'm getting feedback from council members, maybe an additional five million dollars for sidewalks in Ward one, three and four. And some streets includes it for Ward three. There was a bit of a consensus thinking that Ward three didn't get as many streets as they should have our project. So we added new more streets and thirteen million dollars to Ward three for street.
Any feedback? Councilman Crenshaw?
So there are a couple of things here I'd like to talk about. I think it might be in our best interest to have the Dallin Road extension, expansion be an additional separate item for voters to vote on. It could be included under Prop C, but the feedback that I get overwhelmingly says, don't build new roads, fix existing roads. And so I'm thinking that, I'm not convinced Point Parkway is really the best use of nine million because there seems to be some concerns by voters that the Northwest Parkway expansion has not lived up to its original hype by the previous people that made that happen. So what I was proposing was, and taking into consideration the additional thirteen million for street rehabilitation, I thought that we might just have a street expansion and rehabilitation being around a twenty million dollar figure. So replace Point Parkway on the ballot and just have street improvement and rehabilitation for twenty million. And that will be those additional streets to be repaired, not only in Ward three, but any other items that staff later makes a determination have more immediate needs to be improved and rehabilitated. So just a general amount there of twenty million, I think, makes sense. And then remove the the Dallin Road expansion and make it a separate item. With that, I think that the infrastructure improvements would likely have great and is the most likely item of all the propositions to pass.
And our bond counsel, I just want to get some quick input. When it comes to the roads and drainage, how much, how specific do we need to be in terms of naming the roads? Because that becomes a little bit different than parks and rec.
Exactly right, Mayor. So in this situation, you want to be more specific. And the reason is because the city has traditionally issued certificates of obligation to address these same items. And so since you have that option, if the bond failed, okay, for these items, the Attorney General will not approve COs for the same items within three years. So you want to be specific. So if if the city wants to issue COs for something else, we can show it wasn't for these items specifically.
There was decline, yeah.
Otherwise, it.
And we certainly need to keep that in mind in terms of the impact. If something doesn't pass, what how that impacts the city too in terms of for the next three years, it does.
Yeah, so this one, this one is more, you know, it's not just what I call political and something that just inform the public. It's more, it's statutory in terms in 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 addition to that.
So we would need to use the addition on your other slide. We we got the main slides, but we didn't get your little extra slides. So we would need to name those additional.
Those streets, yes.
So the Ward, so Lucas Avenue.
And we could add some, right? Because we could improve, we do have a streets project that does name other streets that need, you know, outside of Ward three and Ward four and Ward one and two that need immediate attention. We could change that. And what I want to say, I don't know, is it my turn?
No. You've started, so I would like for us to go back to raising hands so that everybody.
I'm sorry, because I'm getting ready. I'm excited.
Let's keep in mind, we've got to get through all the.
Okay, I just want to add one thing. I just want to say one thing. This makes me excited because if we take these out, that gives us sixty-one million that we're freeing up, AJ, if you follow the madness. So then we get the police station inside of the two hundred and ten. It brings us back down to a nice place and they can decide if they want to do Dallin Road. I I love the math that's happening here. Good job. Keep it up.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Turner.
That's what I was asking. I know Councilman Crenshaw said about twenty million, but I know this is about thirteen million. And that's what I knew the question would be. That additional seven million, we probably would have to specify, you know, with streets by tomorrow if we do end up finalizing it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I was hoping we could just do general street rehabilitation. But if we can't, I suppose the the ballot would need to say Point Parkway Extension and Lucas Avenue A, Avenue C, all those other.
So just to clarify, it's not that you can't, it's just advised that you shouldn't. Because if you don't, then if we tried to do COs and we didn't specifically name what streets we were doing them for, it would be hard for us to prove to the Attorney General.
We may get declined on the COs.
Yeah, so it's not that you can't, it's just that it's advised not to for that reason.
It it it, Kennedy, is it, Mr. Manager, is it adequate time, timing for you guys to maybe find additional seven million if, because I know you said north, I know you said, yeah, I know you said Dallin Road Extension, but was Northwest Parkway just going to stay in the thirteen? I don't want to speak for you. That's why I'm asking.
I'm proposing we remove, because Dallin Road is a new road. Well, I guess Point Parkway is too.
Yes, sir. That's why I was struggling with that seven million, because I want to, I don't want to, again, I heard the proposal, but I want to make sure we still got that seven million kind of lingering. And they need to be specifically, it needs to be specifically allocated.
Yeah, then I'm fine with that. Then why don't we go with street rehabilitation for thirteen million? Since that's a proposal. And then we would do separate items for voters to vote on, on the Dallin Road Expansion and the Point Parkway Extension.
On Dallin Road, is that one and two?
I think we should just be, I think in order to make this work, it just needs to be one item. So it'd be the the two totals and it would be the Dallin Road Expansion.
Okay.
And it'd be the total of whatever that is, fifty-two million. And then the Point Parkway Extension would be an additional eight point nine.
Were you getting, okay, with the inflation factor? Got you.
Yeah, and then then we would just have thirteen million total for street rehabilitation, which can be.
We would need to specify.
Y'all figure out how, if you want to name streets or.
And that's for the streets that the Ward.
Right there.
Okay. All right.
All right.
And my, for clarity, council member, Dallin Road Expansion, a separate item. Point Parkway, is that a separate item?
I think that ought to be a separate item as well, since it's a new street.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm also in favor of increasing citywide sidewalks to ten million, which would include additional sidewalks for Wards three and four, assuming that that's needed and that's a good number.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Do you have another slide on Prop C or are we going to move to?
Oh, you're going to go to one, no, no, Prop D, I think is the next one. And basically, you, yes. And basically, it's athletic complex, but it go, keep going. It just says if councils or chooses, if you put it with facility, D goes away in that respect. And it'll be moved into the facility. But just as a note, the venue tax will still be a standalone item on the ballot.
Right.
So my.
Councilman Turner.
Yes, my bad, Mayor. My hesitation is, so now how many will we be at total?
We'll have to get it added. We're working on it. We'll have that number.
And also keep in mind, I I can say that, you know, once we get these numbers, you know, tomorrow we will have time to hash hash out further in terms of.
See, well, I wanted two days. See, well, I wanted two days.
Tomorrow, tomorrow I see being, yeah, a longer day. But in that way, too, people can talk to their members of their Bond Advisory Committee in terms of who they put there too. Because a number of, a number of hours have been put into this, but and I know Corey, Councilman Crenshaw attended a number of the meetings, so.
I did. I think it was at all, but 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 two. And and yeah, we're, I think we're on the right track, just some of this just needed to be tweaked a little. And we've heard quite a bit from, at least I have, from the public since this has come out. And I think including, I think making some changes from this being a sports complex with its own separate item, Prop D, and including that with B under facilities and this being a multi-purpose center, which has the opportunity to be, number one, an investment in our local youth is extremely positive. I think trying to sell this project to the public as economic development and creating sports tourism, while it sounds great, I just do not think there's public support for that. But I do believe overwhelmingly the public does want to invest in our youth. So let's have a facility that is focused on job creation, classrooms. I've heard Councilman. I've heard Councilman Sherwood and Councilman Turner talk about a co-op that would involve both Lamar and BISD being involved in that multipurpose center, helping us staff it, getting kids in the classrooms, finding vocational things for them to do and training for them to do, maybe get kids coming right out of high school, going to work for our fire department, and our police department would be incredible and help us with our recruitment problems. And so, again, this moving, I think, out of downtown and not being part of this, you know, Riverwalk, economic development stuff, and being a more of a multipurpose center focused on our youth and an investment in our local kids is much more of a step in the right direction, and something that I think we actually have a chance to pass with voters.
And Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio.
And that was along the lines of what we kind of discussed initially with the facility. Yes, it could be economic incentive there, but the main thing was, you know, just somewhere for our kids to go and kind of transition into society, as Councilman Crenshaw said earlier. I think that would kind of get us back down on our propositions, and I'm one of those people, I'm always willing to compromise, and I can kind of sit back and live with it, because at the end of the day, it's about getting it here in Beaumont. So I'm open to compromising and, and actually doing it, because I, for one, it's not about me, it's about the community.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Durio?
Yeah, I want to ask Coach Lewis a question. In, in the past, we've had committees, and they've made recommendation to council, and, and council changed some of those recommendations, and, and let's just say it didn't, it didn't end well. It upset some of the people that were on the committee, because they had put in a lot of work. Has anything that you heard today make you feel that way? You done put in a lot of work, and then here we come changing it?
Well, I'm, I'm going to speak to, to, to answer your question, I'll be speaking for the committee, the sixteen, seventeen people on the committee. We listen to the people, the people are responsible, you speak for the people, I don't have any problem at all, and, and, you're just doing your due diligence, that's what you're doing. We came to package, a package, put it together, and we knowing that, and I told Roy, I say, Roy, this is what we done, we put in a lot of hours, but at the end of the day, man, you, you are the city council, you represent the people. We did a lot, a lot of research, man, we, I listened to the people, over three thousand people, and just on the streets, the barber shop, everywhere you go, it was like, I said, man, I'm not the mayor of Beaumont, man, you ask me about all these questions about, but I was responsible, because this is a big deal. This is a big deal that people have very strong feelings about. But to answer your question, that's a great question, I think I would speak for the whole committee, that we, we're fine with the recommendations that you guys are putting forward. And again, the biggest sticking point that we had, I mean, we, we labored with, with the police station, I mean, we really, we really wanted that thing to fit, we wanted it fit, but at that price tag they gave us, and I'm excited about that piece, and that would be a change that we didn't do, but once the committee knows that it's fifty-five million dollars, and the other things that people voiced, voiced to, to Corey, as well as you other guys, that it's not a need for, or the other projects didn't do what it's supposed to do, we get all of it, I get all of it, and I'll be speaking with the committee as well, as well as, with, with gap strategies. This is not an easy process, I'm going to tell you, this was not easy. But you guys are doing a great job, because you care about the city, and we care about the dollar amount, I'm on this side, you're going to plan the, whatever it is, but, but I'm, what I'm hearing is right at fifteen dollars, man, and that's, that's real doable, and I'm excited about it. And thank you for that question, that was a great question.
Thank you, Coach, thank you for your service.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
Um, I'd like to say that I'm excited about the reconciliation of the facilities numbers and putting those projects together, police and youth, the multipurpose center under one proposition. I think that's going to send out a very powerful signal to our community about our kids and about our future, and about our ability to work together on things that really, really, really matter, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. City Manager, do you have any more slides for us?
I think that's all kind of work, next steps, if, if you're ready for. Today, you know, just get those props finalized, I don't know, do we need to, any other questions clear on everything, so we'll be ready for tomorrow to have the wording and the agenda down.
And if we could, Mr. City Manager, if gap strategies could give us both a number that would be, if the voters approved all propositions without the additional items, we may pull out to be separate, as well as a number for everything included. So that way we could let the public know, if you approve everything, but you don't approve the extra ten million for, under recreation, for the Alice Keith Park Recreation Center, you don't approve the Dallin Expansion and the Point Park Extension, assuming those are the only three additional ballot items, that there would be one cost for everything, and then the additional cost, which would only be voter approval, because I'm worried that we may get over that fifteen dollars, but there may be, it may be important for us to have both those figures.
And the Downtown Rec Center apologies, we were
Good point.
Thank you.
Jeff Barton with Gaps Strategies, we'll be glad to prepare those numbers, I think we're keeping those numbers, and so are your staff, so we're trying to reconcile those as we go, there was a lot of back and forth. And on the, the, did I understand that you would take the, what had been referred to as the Downtown Rec Center and move that under facilities, just
Yes.
But with, but without changes to the price, right?
Right, the price would remain forty-nine million.
Yeah, I think you're probably over the fifteen dollars without those, you know, if you, if you include everything, and we'll calculate that and give you a price on those as well as the standalone items.
With the individual items, as well as the price, monthly items, you know, on each of the items, so that when, if we delete one, we know how much we're deleting.
We'll give you several options that way.
Yeah.
I was just about to say, so, so we have, tomorrow we will have the option to delete certain things, like certain things may not make it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, i- if I understand the will of the council, then what we'll do is, we'll give you a, a, a rough price tag per each proposition, and that way you've got it for parks, for rec, and so on, and then, and then we'll give you a combined total for everything except those three standalone that you mentioned.
Okay, so then, and to make this easier for you guys, Mr. Williams, don't you think, instead of doing facilities assessment and downtown cameras, we could just include all that under the, the ten million that you want for facilities?
Yes, good point, that all that will be included in that ten million, that, that those dollars go away, so to speak, and it's in that ten million.
And make sure we add the, the breakdown on those items too, I mean, if you're saying fifty million, what that is per month
Yes.
For a total number.
We'll give you, we'll give you the total numbers, and we'll give you per month kind of a breakdown, so that you can look at it that way.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of looking at how you said we can possibly
Would y'all mute your mags, please?
Yeah. I'm kind of looking at how you said we can possibly fall over the fifteen when we took out Dallin Road and Point North, Port Northway. I think that police station money was less than both of those projects combined.
Only, Councilmember, because my understanding was you, if you, you're not completely taking them off the bond, you're just putting them up as a separate proposition?
Got you.
So when we talk about the total, I think then, there's lots of different ways to talk to that, but to the community and to voters, but when you talk about the total, that's not really being taken off the total bond, just being put onto another
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, the way the propositions were, it didn't total over that soft number we kind of looked at, but if we get these extra things, then we would kind of slightly be over, I understand what you're saying now.
Yes, sir.
And if, and if we might, th- this is on behalf of Councilman Sherwood and me, this Riverfront Park Extension, we didn't, we didn't talk about this, but twelve point five million for that, what, what, what is that?
That's, you want to talk about that?
Come on to the
Is that an Embassy Suites, Austin?
So the Riverfront Park Extension is going to actually be an expansion connecting Riverfront Park to the Hotel and Convention Center site. So please pay attention that this has actually been slated on the CIP for the past few years, and what's really exciting is that not only will it go along with the cohesiveness of the Hotel and Convention Center site, but in the CIP, it has been listed to feature a water fountain with interactive splash pad, an activity center designed with a children's focus, providing a family-friendly space for play and engagement. A modern amphitheater will host live performances, community events, and outdoor entertainment. The project will also include decorative lighting, a restroom facility, and multi-place building housing, at least four vendors, storefronts, kiosks, and fostering local business growth and economic activity. I wanted to include the exact description from the CIP to show along where it's coming from. Here is a picture that's depicted to showcase the potential future rendering of a bridge of some sort that we'll have to go over to allow for pedestrians to walk across the rail access. Included would be, now, of course, these are just renderings, and in the bond meetings, we discussed several times the difference between renderings and actual, you know, final products. Please understand, we were trying to draw through an idea and try to get some actual estimated figures. PBK is the current civil engineer designer for the Convention Center of the project slated through Stonehenge Holdings that we have already currently contracted out with. And so in addition to them actually rendering the Convention Center, this would be in, in addition to, to allow for interactive, as pedestrians would be able to cross the pedestrian bridge, and then allow for where the Riverfront Park Extension would be. If you keep going down, we're going to show the amphitheater. So the idea has always been for five-five-five main, the actual previously demolished site, to be for the community. In this, you'll see interactive play areas for children, family, interactive splash pads, and of course, an amphitheater that currently they're trying to propose would host at least fifteen hundred. That amphitheater stage is actually connected as a part of the Convention Center, and what's exciting is that the potential outdoor restrooms would also be attached to the building as well. Again, just renderings, and as you continue to see some of the renderings, the bond committee was able to not just see these renderings, but see how the proposed site would allow for pedestrian access for the entirety of the Riverfront Landing, which is also referred to as Riverfront Park Extension in the CIP.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Can I answer your question?
It, it does, and I might just add the comment that, you know, again, some of this sounds great, but if there's a chance the Convention Center Hotel does not happen, I just don't see why we would want to fund this now. So I would ask that we remove this from the Parks and Recreation consideration for the ballot, and consider funding this later, if and when the Convention Center Hotel is, is funded.
And just a little background, please understand that initially, when it was discussed with gap strategies, we had slated a possible additional downtown project to be mentioned, which was in fact the Convention Center. This Riverfront Park Extension was inclusive of that, because it was a CIP project. Remember the funnels that Jeff explained, we started off with those funnels, so the CIP, this is actually a project within the CIP. And so as we learned a little bit more information, like we've all learned of, anything that goes on this bond that is not passed, we cannot fund for three years, which is why this Convention Center was never proposed to the bond committee to consider to be put on, but rather instead, to support our ongoing efforts for the Project Riverfront, Riverfront Park Extension would allow for what we're giving back to the community on the five-five-five location.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Well, I know they're going to be getting all this together, so that tomorrow we will be able to see the final numbers and discuss how we're going to get from point A to point B. I would recommend that you reach out to the advisor, Advisory Board, and, and share some of these discussions, just to get their feedback. You appointed two people each, and I think that's, I think that's important information to get, so. All right.
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Just to get back to you, I think we're, we're still trying to reconcile just a few things as we do some adds and deducts, but I think you're a little bit over three hundred million dollars with all of the propositions, right? So that's not just the, the, the three or four you started with, but if those projects that would still be put to voters would be a little over three hundred million dollars, so that probably comes closer to sixteen dollars, just to give you guys some sense of where you are as you break up and get ready for tomorrow.
All right, well, I certainly think there's, it's going to provide for an interesting meeting tomorrow, so everybody better pack a lunch, and, or, I think it would be dinner, since it's going to start at one-thirty. So at that, at this point, I'm going to, see if anybody has any additional comments, also our bond council is here, to see if you have any comments you'd like to add today? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to, we can have final comments before we adjourn, and I'll let Councilman Crenshaw, if you'll go first.
I think I've said all that I need to say, a lot of the issues that have been concerning for people over the last couple of weeks for me, I think we've addressed the additional funding for the Botanical Gardens at Terrell Park, and the drainage for the golf course, several golfers have reached out and said, look, I understand y'all aren't going to do the, the twenty million in improvements, but we've got to have some help, or this golf course is just going to continue to be a failure if we do not get this drainage help, so happy to do that. I think pulling out the, the new streets is a good idea, that way voters can let us know whether they want that or not, but overall, improving existing streets seems to be something that is supported overwhelmingly, so I'm happy to get behind that. I'm also very grateful for Councilmen Turner and Sherwood for agreeing to support the funding for a new and improve, and improvements for our police department in exchange for the changes that we made for moving the downtown sports complex and making it more of a multipurpose center and an investment in our youth, and bringing that over to the facilities proposition. So overall, I think this is going to be a home run for our city and for voters, and I appreciate the council and all the hard work of the bond committee and of gap strategies for this project.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
It's a great day in Beaumont, and I am happy to be a part of this process, and I'm looking forward to it, all the excitement that is being created throughout this bond process, and I'm happy that we are getting to do some new things and get some energy going, and I am super excited, and I'm proud of you all, y'all are doing so good, but the good work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Weems?
No, just thank you to everybody for, to the, the committee for working hard and packaging this up for us to look at, and gap strategies, making this easy for us to digest and, and understand, and I'm glad we turned this into a two-day deal, I think it was helpful.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner?
Man, I just love the fact that the amount of time it took to even land here, you know, starting back four or five years ago with the strategic planning to where we at, just the fact that you got new council members that can come on board, and man, it's been three months for you guys, y'all done kept up and on it and making recommendations and changes, I respect it, because again, you know, it's our job to work together and make this city the best we can, and we got to be willing to compromise and take care of, you know, numerous divisions, like Councilman Crenshaw said, our police department, I appreciate you guys, you guys do a great job, and this is an opportunity to step up for you guys in return, and we're doing it as a unit. So this is something we've kind of been working on, a lot of meetings, a lot of pushing back and forth, but I think we're finally close to where we need to be. Even the additional options to have some standalone things that, hopeful, it can make it, but if it don't, we understand, but we're giving citizens the option, still being able to kind of steer around that number that we originally started with, with the, if we don't do the addition. So at the end of the day, it's up to the voters, and I think we've worked real hard to put something together that you guys can kind of digest. One of the main things, I agree with Councilman, Councilmember Crenshaw, One of the main things, I agree with Councilmember Crenshaw, almost when I'm in the grocery store, out to dinner with my wife, people come up and say, what are you gonna do about the existing streets? And that's why we kind of start talking about it, let's focus on some of the existing problems we have, you know, as well as give people the option for new things. So, you know, to the community, we heard you, a lot of people talk about sewer, and I just want to touch on that briefly. You know, that's our water enterprise fund with the surplus, and when we do our bond ratings, if, you know, you're funding it through another source, that bond score can go down like your credit score, then the interest rates are extremely higher when it comes to your borrowing power. So, we have to be very careful on what we address in this bond. We can do drainage projects, as we done, but when you start getting to that, you can't risk waiting three years to work on something that's in dire need now. So, I think it's important, we kind of have those transparent conversations, and I appreciate everybody in the process.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Hilliard?
Well, again, I'd like to thank Coach Lewis and the bond committee for doing such a fabulous job. I know this wasn't easy, and I want to thank all the department heads for the long hours they put into bringing this to the bond committee, and then eventually to us. And, you know, there's not much more I can say, everybody's pretty much said it. You know, the Botanical Gardens, that's important, it's a beautiful part of our city, and I'm glad that we're addressing that. The police department, it's much needed. You know, these, these men and women do a fantastic job of keeping our city safe. And, you know, I'm just thankful, thankful to staff, thank you to our manager, our city manager, and to the bond, and to the, to y'all for everything you've done. And I'm excited, I'm excited to work with an amazing group of men and women up here, and we all have the objective of making this a better city for all of us. And so, I'm excited to be a part of it, and I look forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman Hilliard. Councilman Durio?
Just repeating basically what everybody else said, I want to thank everybody, the bond committee especially. You know, you guys done awesome job bringing this, this to us with these recommendations on it. And manager and staff for finding a price that we can afford to build a police station, you know, like half price, you slashed it in half, you know? And that's, that's really appreciated as well. Just, I'm looking forward to tomorrow, because we're not done yet. We still, because people already asked me, when are we gonna vote on the bond issue? I said, well, we hadn't even decided if we was gonna have an election yet. So, we still have to do that, you know, we're not finished yet, and we gotta, hopefully, that'll pass tomorrow, but then after that, the finish line will be in November, and we still, you know, have work to do. But for the work y'all have done thus far, getting us to this point, really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, manager and staff, Gap Strategies as well.
Alright, Councilman Durio?
I'm finished.
Alright.
What, should I say something else?
I'm waiting.
I'll let you know before we-
Yeah, I expect it. Madam City Attorney? Alright, Public Works, Assistant City Managers?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the council members on your work on this bond issue today, all of your dialogue to help move the city of Beaumont forward. This is a very pivotal moment, and it will be, in terms of Beaumont's future. As you know, these are some very large projects, and I feel this can really help, and it will really help Beaumont grow, which is what we all want. And I want to thank Coach Lewis and the committee for all of your work. As you guys know, I mean, they did put in many hours working through this process, as well as Gap Strategies. I mean, this probably couldn't have been done without their assistance and their guidance and leadership. So, thank you, Gap Strategies, and also want to thank our bond counsel and financial advisor. Thank you for all of your work, and we know there's a little more work ahead, but thanks for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
So, I always say, watching the sausage being made is not always pretty, but the result can be satisfying sometimes. And I think this is a perfect example of watching the sausage being made and coming up with the result. I commend this council for working together to get to this point. I know we had some tough decisions to make, because you all represent different constituencies. So, so far, excellent job, and I commend each and every one of you for the work you've put into this. Likewise, thank you again, Mr. Lewis, Coach Lewis, for the work you've done in your committee. We'll encourage all of them, and they should know that this council's gonna do the right thing, so they're doing the right thing. Thank you, Gap, thank you, staff. Staff's done a tremendous job, putting a lot of work into this. We don't always see it, I thank the police department for sitting down with me to go over this. I know they had some frowns on their face when I sat down with them, but they said they could go with it. Now, I'm gonna see if they stick to that word now. And everyone, so thank you, thank you, Derek, and all of you. So, we appreciate it, and we'll be back here tomorrow. Tomorrow, you've got to approve items for the election, approve the items for the proposition. And then there'll be an election on the first Tuesday in November, if you call that. So, we still have some work to do, but appreciate you and look forward to going through the process.
Well, with that, I also want to certainly thank our Bond Advisory Committee and Gap Strategies and our, and our staff, and the amount of work and time that we've put in. And this council, because four new people elected in May, and this is something, when we're talking about a bond that hadn't been talked about in 43 years for the city of Beaumont. So, it's, it is very exciting, and I've heard a lot of real positive feedback as well. And I suggest everybody get a good night's rest for tomorrow. And with that, the meeting is now adjourned.